I'd like to welcome everybody to this town council meeting, Monday, April 28th, 2025, 7:00 PM, McKennan Council Chambers. For the agenda, agenda item number one, Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is of the United States of America and includes the Republic for which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to the agenda item number two, roll call.
Thank you. Counsel Alazo.
President.
Counsel Marquetti.
President.
Counsel, I can't remember this. Counsel Shenya.
President.
Counsel Daniel.
President.
Counsel Dow.
I'm heading into go from.
Counsel Montigny.
President.
Counsel Ortiz.
President.
Counsel Kelly.
President.
And then Counsel Rivas is excused.
She should be excused, I think she's in Puerto Rico.
Yeah, she's delayed, she is delayed, she did send an email to us or text to us saying that, uh.
Will we?
Somebody broke into her car unfortunately when she arrived at the airport, so.
Oh geez. Whoa. Okay, we have a call room, moving on to agenda item number three, consider an accept meeting minutes of April 14th, 2025.
So move.
Is motion to weigh a second. Seconded by Ortiz, any additions, corrections, or deletions to the minutes of that meeting? If not, all in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to subcommittees, Department of Public Works, Counsel Shenya.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, we had a meeting on Thursday, April 24th, at 6:00 PM in the Veterans Meeting Room, and one of the items that's on the agenda tonight has been approved by the Subcommittee unanimously.
Moving on to Education Human Services, Counsel Montigny.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we originally said that there would be a meeting on the 30th to do all the budgets, but we will be doing Wednesday, April 30th, 6:00 PM, the Bay Path, Jacob Edwards, Inspections, Community Center, Recreation Department, Veterans, and then we will have a follow-up meeting on May 8th, Thursday, to do Southbridge Public Schools, and counselors, I did just today, send that public records request to add to your files for that, uh, school budget, thank you.
Moving on to General Government, Counsel Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, we haven't had a meeting since our last town council meeting, however, we do have a meeting scheduled for May 1st at 6:00 PM to go over mostly budget items.
Moving on to Planning and Development, Counsel Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, I have nothing for this evening, except to say that we have a meeting tomorrow night, April 29th, at 6:00 PM in the Veterans Room.
Moving on to Protections First to Property, Counsel Dow, no report at this time.
He does have a meeting tomorrow night as well, April 29th.
Seven?
7:00 PM.
Moving on to Chairman's announcements, I got a quick announcement, I would just like to, um, call for a moment of silence for the General family, one of the longtime employees, her son, Mike, the son, and the father, Dick General was, uh, involved in the Southbridge Credit Union for years, when I first get elected to the council back in, in the early eighties, my first tour, he was the gentleman with the visor and the big ledgers, and there were no computers, and Dick General would present the, the budget, and it would be in a paper format, and we'd go line by line, and it would take us a very long time, uh, and then a couple of young fellows came on board, John LaFlesch and Dean Yakabuchi, and, uh, Dick spent a lot of time with the boys modernizing, Dick was learning about computers, and he, they were learning about finances at Southbridge, so they made a great team, Dick General was a mentor of so many people in Town Hall over the years, and I'd just like to call for a moment of silence at this time. Thank you very much. I attended a, I'd like to thank Counsel Daniels, uh, he's very instrumental in teaming up, and, uh, we're working on a project for the Rios families, the playground at Chalton Street, uh, it's been voted by the council, dedicate a section of the recreation area, the Rios family who runs a golf tournament in memory of their son, and I think, uh, young Rios would be very happy to see what's happening, and I think the town, the generosity that's pouring out on this project, uh, we need to refurbish a couple of bathrooms, we need, we're doing some landscaping blocks, there's gonna be a tremendous amount of play sets, swing sets, all types of things, um, everybody's excited to get it going, right now, the B, the BSC group is donating some time to draw up a quick print for us, after we show all the topography and stuff, um, we had basically a kickoff, Globe Sign donated the sign that's being put up at Chalton Street Recreation, anybody that would like to participate, please give me a call, Town Manager, John Daniels, and any help that we can get, uh, or donations of any kind, uh, we'd very, we'd very, we'd really appreciate it, it's a great cause. Moving on to presentations, we do not have a presentation tonight. Oh, we can't forget that one, number six, Town Manager's announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, this, again, announced curbside, uh, curbside yard waste continues through May 31st, again, the yard waste dumpster at the DPW will start the first week of June, just a reminder that this Saturday from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the DPW, there'll be the hazard, Household Hazardous Waste Collection Event, so if you have some old TVs, uh, they will be collecting those for a small fee, they are also accepting any mattresses and box springs for $65, checks only, um, so go ahead and participate with that, and online, we do have all the other items that they do take. Reminder also that we will do the Join Us Beautify Southbridge on May 17th with a rain date on the 18th, anybody interested, meet here at the Town Hall at 8:30. There was a resignation I received today from the Airport Commission, Paul M. Tetro, after 10 years of service to the town, has decided to step down, we thank him very much for his service, so we'll be looking for a replacement on the Airport Commission, that also brings me to that we are now in the process of reviewing all our reappointments to all the boards and commissions that we have, we do have several openings due to the changes in, um, the charter, one of those being the Zoning Board of Appeals, I know, Mr. Clements, Rick Clements asked today if we could put out a message, anybody interested in the Zoning Board of Appeals, uh, to put in a letter of interest, but please contact our office, we do have a number of boards and commissions, uh, our legal licensing board is also looking for another member, uh, to fill out that as well as alternates, so if you're looking to get involved in the town and town government, start learning the process of what we do up here, for those that, uh, wanna be involved, we do have opportunities for you to be involved and participate in our government. In regards, there was a question about the Performance Revolver Fund, I have not forgotten about that, uh, we're waiting for the legal, and hopefully we'll have that on the next agenda, if, if not the next agenda by the May 19th agenda. Counsel Rivas had asked about the cannabis local tax, and I told her I would have an update, she's not here, but I'll still give the update, in regards to cannabis local excise tax that we receive, in fiscal year 24, the town received $172,521.82. FY '25, year-to-date, the first three quarters of this year, we have received $145,403.17. Through the first three quarters of last year, we, we received approximately $125,120, so this year we're seeing approximately a 16.13% increase in year-to-date revenue for the local cannabis taxes. And finally, one of the projects that we have, uh, one tonight, then we're very excited to talk about, and we'll take that up as an agenda item, but the Airport Hangar Project, I had to inform the council, that did go out to bid, we received those bids last week, we will be coming to council to review a proposal, um, in regards to, the bids did come in over approximately $500,000. Rick Clements, the, um, Airport Commissioner Chairman, uh, stated very clearly that we did not want the town picking up the burden of that excessive, because that would be on the town, so we have worked with the FAA and the Mass Department of Transit, uh, Transportation, and they have agreed to provide some additional funding to the town, which will require a very small match, uh, from the town to get this six tea hangar, uh, project, it was a local contractor that was the low, uh, responsive bidder, so we're looking forward to bringing that to council through General Government, Mr. Kelly, shortly, okay? So, and that's all I have for this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Moving on to Citizens Forum, are there any citizens that would like to address the council on any issue that is not on the agenda? There is nobody at this time, we'll move on, vote to accept the warrant for the local election on Tuesday, June 10th, 2025.
Second.
Motion by Shenya, seconded by Ortiz, discussion. If no discussion, all in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to agenda item number 10, vote, a Department of Public Works transfer request of $65,000 from account 610450-58300-91250, Water Capital Reserve, to account 610450-583000-25580, Water System Capital.
Second.
Is a motion, second, discussion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
This was fully invented and discussed at the Subcommittee meeting on Thursday night, and the members present voted unanimously to support this.
Unanimous vote at Subcommittee, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to 11, vote to award the Southbridge Fire Station Project to PDS Engineering and Construction Incorporated, the responsive and responsible company, offering the lowest bid, base bid at $19,940,000 plus alternate number one for $60,000, in the total contract of $20 million, and allow the Town Manager sign all related paperwork to the contract.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Shenya, seconded by Ortiz, Deputy Chief.
Good evening, thank you for having us this evening, and, uh, we're proud to stand here with a, with a much better scenario, uh, as you recall, back in December, we made a presentation and, uh, to where we stood, and, uh, with, uh, with your authorization, we put the project out to bid, because we didn't know until we, until we knew, so it was a good time to do that, uh, we got really aggressive bidding, uh, there were 12 contractors that, uh, had, uh, taken out, uh, the paperwork and five submitted bids, last time around, we only received, uh, two legitimate bids, um, and we've gotten a lot better, uh, scenario here, so, uh, the low bid from PDS was $19,940,000, and then the alternate of $60,000, alternate one was, uh, fencing along the field side, and then it also put in an electronic-controlled gate, uh, where Morton Street technically is right now, uh, based on security and traffic flow and, uh, keeping people from that area, uh, the committee felt that this was the, uh, the best way to move forward with that, uh, where we stand at this point is, uh, there have been $5,025,273.81 that have been paid out, originally, we had a debt exclusion approved for 25.7 million, so we have basically $20,674,000 left, um, so with this proposal, uh, we have enough funds to secure that construction contract, there are other soft costs that go along with this project, uh, bringing the project total to, at this point, the budget estimate is $28,613,000, if you take, uh, our original 25.7, uh, debt exclusion, we have received $1 million, uh, in Congressional Discretion Funds, uh, in the form of a reimbursement for the land, which will come at the end of the project, we secured $913,000 in USDA Funds, uh, that cannot be applied to the construction, but those are being applied to, uh, our firematic, uh, uh, equipment inside the building, furnishings, computers, things like that, uh, and then, back in June of 2024, $1 million of free cash was allocated, where we stand at this point, if you look at the budget document in front of you, essentially the million dollars in free cash is being applied as the contingency, so, as, as long as things come in on budget, on time, or under, those funds should not be expended, we hope that's the case, uh, as with any construction project, there can be change orders, there can be things that come up, um, but everything is set in motion, uh, for this, and with your approval, uh, the count, the, uh, Fire Station Building Committee voted unanimously to move forward with this, uh, low bid with PDS, uh, with alternate one, and we have it here before you, do you have any questions?
Any questions, Mr. Chairman, I'll be gone.
Thank you very much, that's very great news, um, it seems like you guys did the best you can, and I really appreciate all of everybody's hard work and able, being able to meet that number, I think the one thing that probably citizens at home are wondering is, I know it's very early, any sort of rough ballpark window of when the whole thing would be complete now, maybe the end of 2027?
So, uh, where we stand right now is, we should have, if, if we move forward tonight, we should have contracts and everything signed and moving by the end of the month, uh, they were discussing possibly some kind of a groundbreaking, maybe the first week of June, somewhere around there.
Wow.
And then the original construction estimate was 12 to 18 months, we're looking at kind of a 15 months is where we're gonna be.
Fantastic, okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Any other discussion, any other counselors?
Yeah.
Counsel Shenya. No, you can't, you can't go back and be a firefighter anymore.
Oh, I don't know if I could pass the physical.
Go ahead, Counsel.
Sometimes I wonder about getting up in the morning, uh, when this originally project came on, I supported the vote of 27 and some change, million dollars, and I actually was living in Florida at the time when the vote came, and was won, and, over the course of time, when the bids came out last year, I kinda was opposed of supporting the additional funding that was being needed, and, uh, I wanted to stick to what the original vote was for, and with the hard work of the committee, the Town Manager, that came to fruition that this is like almost two and a half million dollars underbid, and well within the money that was allocated, and I, I really look forward, and I hope I'm around here when that is completed, and, uh, being able to go in, walk in that building, just compare what I had when I worked there, to what the future guys are gonna have, it's gonna be a first-class fire department, it's not loaded with bells and whistles that everybody thinks it is, it's a working building for working people, and I wanna thank the committee, the chief, deputy chief, well, job well done, and I'd be wholeheartedly support this tonight.
Thank you.
Any further discussion by Counsel? Counsel Marquetti.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, I'm always, I always take a look at the budget, you sent me the budget last year, and every time I look at it, um, is this thing working, I think it is. Okay, um, every time I look at the budget, the numbers seem to change a little bit, uh, this year, last year, when you sent me the budget, you were at $30,115, something like that.
Yep.
And now it's 28,613.
Yes, that's based, this final adjustment is based on the hard construction cost with this bid proposal in front of us, uh, and then the other adjustments that were, uh, that have been made, uh, we had to make some adjustments to the contracts with the architect and with the project manager, because things have gone so far beyond timeline of, uh, when they originally made their proposals, so, those are what, at one point, uh, it was 30 million plus, uh, but, uh, where we came in here is the stated potential contract cost for this project, uh, for the construction alone was $24 million, that's what was put on, uh, on the bid proposal, and we essentially are $4 million under that right now, it is a very, uh, good timing during this market.
And you say that you've already spent about $5 million?
That's correct.
So that's not included in this total, correct?
Many of the things are in there, the majority of that, uh, half, nearly half of that cost was the acquisition of the pro, uh, the property, uh, and, uh, moving the residents, um, and then we have spent, uh, uh, almost a million, maybe a little bit over a million dollars on the architectures at, at this point, um, so yes, it has been $5 million, uh, that we have expended.
Just as a point of clarification, just, if you review the, uh, the budget on April 17th, you'll see a number of columns that say, complete, 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 complete means we've paid for it.
Okay.
Okay, so if that's part of the question about how that $5 million funnels in, complete means, complete means paid for.
All right.
Okay.
So, I did go through the line items here, and compared it to the budget that you sent me last year, and that's where the, the numbers start, start to get a little fuzzy for me, anyway.
Okay.
I know the construction costs have come down, but then when you look at the soft costs, they've all gone up.
Yes.
Uh, the architecture engineer's gone up 175, uh, project manager's gone up almost 180, these miscellaneous costs, last year, when you had a 30 million budget, you took out all the furniture and computer equipment, you completely omitted that, and yet it was 30 million, now you've added that all back in, but yet the budget is 28 million, so that's where it gets a little fuzzy for me, that it's gone up all that mu, that amount of money, yet it's lower than last year's.
So, uh, based on the, uh, the budgets that we've seen in the past, obviously additional work has been completed, some of the increases with the architectural firm, along with their, uh, increase in billable, uh, build hour, uh, rate for work coming, the architecture, most of the work is, is done prior to construction, and then they have their, um, follow-ups and monitoring during construction, the project manager's significant increases, the majority of his work is still on the table, um, some of the other things that were, uh, laid out, they are on, on this budget line item, but they are accounted for in that $913,000 in USDA Funds.
And what if we don't get that USDA fund, and you know, I know that Washington DC has been cutting a lot of those funds back, and do you have a backup plan for that?
I, I have been monitoring that with the USDA, 'cause both of the funding mechanisms that we have from the federal government are USDA, and at this point, they have not been adjusted in any manner, um, and as we speak, uh, they had submitted the pro, uh, paperwork for the $1 million to be essentially deposited in our, not in our account, but a hard earmark for us.
Has any of this gone out to bond yet, any of the payments that we've made so far?
Out of bond, no, we will, we will be going out for the, um, the monies that we have spent so far, will be on a, uh, bond anticipation note, um, that we are securing right now, Michelle and our finance team and Ben Oglesby, who was here for the finance meeting that day, we have talked to, we had a bond hearing, uh, last week, which we talked to Standard and Poor's about our bond rating, what we have determined is, um, at the end of the project, we would go out for the bond, we would do a series of short-term borrowings, and when everything is completed, she's gonna put together a bond package that would include all the existing bonds, uh, plus some of the road bonds as well, into a big bond package.
Okay, now last year, the contingent, contingency, you had 5% construction and 1% owner, this year, it's 5.89% construction, and you've admitted the owner's contingency.
That was combined, Counsel.
Okay.
Yeah, it was combined, uh, it was discussed at, uh, at the last meeting, and, um, the, the project manager asked whether we wanted to keep it separated or, or merge it, and in the end, it, it didn't matter one way or another, so, uh.
I'm just going by the list here, and it says, construction, contingency on construction, it doesn't say owner, but it is less than last year.
Yes, obviously, it, based on the, they, they were looking to hold a 6%, 6% contingency, and based on the lower construction number, that went down.
But we wouldn't want them to come back on us and say, oh, we missed something, we wanna add it to it, correct?
No, I, the, uh, from what I understand, there could be adjustments based on the tariffs, things like that, but, uh, what they're trying to do is, as soon as, as soon as we have the authority to move forward, that, uh, the contractor would immediately start buying the materials and everything for it, to secure it, to avoid those.
And also last year, the electrical pre-purchase was removed, I saw the notes, uh, 296,000, was that included in this budget?
That is included in the budget, they, essentially, if you, uh, you, there's almost a wash between, uh, with the two multifamily homes that, uh, were demolished this past year, that was in the original bid, and that was 200, somewhere, $1,000 along those lines, and then, uh, the electrical equipment was outside of the bid, now the electrical equipment is back in, 'cause we've already completed the work on the, on the two multifamilies.
And then finally, I just wanted to ask a couple of questions about the lowest bid, PDS, and the next lower bid, DA Sullivan and Sons.
Mm-hmm.
Um, just, I was just doing a search on my own, to look at some of their, so we don't have anything here about them, I, I'd take it Palm Roy fully vetted these companies, I just was curious, did the committee fully vet both of these companies, because, just looking at what they have on their own websites, uh, PDS Engineering, 60 years in business, they use a lot of subcontractors, they also do a lot of pre-engineered structure, which is prefab, now maybe they all do that, but did anybody ask DA, DA Sullivan and Sons, do they do prefab, that was something that I, I would want to ask, and before you answer, PD, DA Sullivan and Sons, they've been in business 128 years, and they've done, they have built fire stations, they built one in Green, Greenfield, so, did the committee ever bring them in, ask them about that, how did you do it, go look at it, these are the things that I would want to ask.
So, uh, during the pre-qualification project, uh, they have to submit all of their, all of the general contractors have to submit through DCAM, uh, and get approved to be bidding those projects, and then our committee, we had members of our committee, also with the project manager, uh, and also with the architectural firm that go through and score everyone, uh, and everyone passed the pre-qualification, there was no one eliminated during pre-qualification, PDS, uh, at this point is bonded for work in Massachusetts, up to a $144 million project, they were the largest firm out of there, uh, I have reviewed projects that they have done, uh, I spoke with the, uh, former and current fire chiefs in Ware, they built the Ware Fire Station about 10 years ago, I spoke with the, uh, project, uh, or the, uh, facilities manager in Munson, they built a, uh, Town Hall and Police Station in Munson, and discussed with them about, you know, did they have any issues with them, and, and, you know, I got, uh, basically the same information that everyone tells me when I talk about construction projects, is watch the change orders, that's where the money is.
And that's what I was gonna ask next, I mean, if you're gonna, not quite sure why we would want to hire a engineering company, when this thing has been fully engineered, completely, just look at the schematics and don't make any change orders, how are you going to control that, because I, I've seen so many engineering companies come into this town and do work that we voted on, and then it's change order after change order after change order, so, it's something that, is that something that can be built into a contract? I get it, if there's something underground that they don't know is there, but, again, you've completely looked at that ground, you've done drilling, if there's nothing there, then no, can, can you put in there a no-change-order clause, or is that something that's just not allowed?
So, I, to be perfectly honest with you, I could not answer that honestly, but, uh, I do not believe you can do it without change order, without a change order clause, um, we will be holding at least weekly meetings during the project with the project team, as well as the construction team, I had the very conversation with, uh, our project manager, just saying that, you know, we need to make sure that this doesn't become an issue, um, Munson actually went to two meetings a week at one point during construction, just to make sure that that didn't, uh, become an issue, and, uh, the project manager assured me that they watch them very tightly, and that they've actually back-billed contractors for frivolous change orders.
I would suggest you tell them to go talk to Castle and Booze about any change orders they have, that's all I have, thank you.
Any other counselors at, at this time, Counsel Daniels and Montigny?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, um, I just wanna take a moment to, to thank Deputy Chief Eulich, um, listening to you tonight, and having listened to you in the past, seeing the, um, Listening to you tonight and having listened to you in the past, seeing the building committee meetings, you are so fluent in this project. You, you've, you seem to have most of the answers, and when you don't, you admit it, and you find out what they are. You must be eating and sleeping this project, and it's gotta be keeping you up a lot of nights, and you've got another, theoretically, another 18 or 19 months of no sleep. I just want to say that it's remarkable, the work that's being done here. I know that there are other people on the committee. I know that the town manager has been very involved in this as well, so I don't, you know, short-change them by any stretch. But Joe, remarkable work, and I just want to say thank you very, very much for that.
Thank you.
Counselor Montigny.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I have to echo Counselor Daniel's statements there. You guys have put in so much work. And do you happen to have an estimate of how many meetings you had as the fire building committee? Has it been going on for four years?
So, so I've been on the committee for 20 years, and the committee was reinvigorated back in 2014, 2015, and it's been going nonstop since.
Yeah, well, to you and to Jack, that time that you have put in, he's right, the fluency is remarkable. I feel more than comfortable supporting this because of all the knowledge that you guys have, and to meet the number, it's just fantastic in these economic conditions. I really appreciate it. I'm sure the citizens do too. Thank you.
Any councilors have any other thoughts? Counselor Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Again, thank you for all your hard work on, on this project. It's certainly quite an undertaking, to appreciate it. And I'm, I'm gonna support the motion tonight. I just, my only hesitation is the turmoil that's going on in the world right now, especially in the world of trade and tariffs. And of course, a lot of the materials that are used in construction are gonna be subject to these tariffs as they're often produced overseas. That said, that's all unknown as to what's gonna happen, and I don't think I can base my vote on, on, on unknowns. I just think we should be aware of it, that, that there could be significant cost increases as this project moves forward. If, and hopefully I'm wrong, but I mean, hopefully that's not gonna happen. But I just think we should all need to be aware that those issues are out there in a project of this size. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, one question.
Any further questions?
Just one question. Speaking of committees, do they stay together, I hope?
Yes.
Okay.
To completion.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion by any of the councilors? If not, I'd just like to turn it over to Town Manager. He wasn't the Town Manager when this started. He was the chairman of the building committee. Now he's the Town Manager. Would you like to comment on anything at this time?
Thank you. Yes, thank you. This, this is really a very proud moment and happy moment for all of us in the community. Deputy Chief Hewlic, John Sugda have been on the committee from day one, I believe, and they've seen many people come and go. I was just a small blip when we started the, restarted the building committee back with interim Town Manager Kevin Pecos. Yes, lots of meetings, lots of meetings, not just four years, many, many years. Couple of fire chiefs, I believe, many building inspectors, many town managers. So to get to this point, but I also want to thank the council because the council, we've had a lot of debate, healthy debate, dialogue about where does the fire station go? How big should it be? Do we value engineer? And when we came against the hard task a year ago, when we had substantial increases in not knowing, and we brought together a plan and the council supported our finance plan in a just-in-case manner, allowed us to be able to go out to bid at a time where it's very favorable to us. Do we concern about tariffs? Yes. These bids were due right around the tariffs were announced, so you know, a lot of cost estimators go into what can and may not happen. But a lot of hard work from everybody on the committee. Like to thank them all for the hard work and this council. And I'm very happy to be able to say that we put a shovel on the ground and get the fire station completed because it's desperately needed by the community and our firefighters that work hard every day. And they deserve a good house that they live in 24/7, eat, sleep, cry, do everything together. So happy that we are able to provide this to the town. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Any further discussion by council? In a closing comment, I just would like to thank the building committee. I know what you went through, the DACA moments when they said, "We're not building it." This was bad, that's bad, this is good. The thing with the building committee, it keeps knocking the tin. People keep coming to me on the council saying, "Well, what about this, or what about that? Are you gonna do this?" Keep working it. If you have the perseverance which the committee did, the manager did, and this council, the history. We can't build a fire department, we have to do elementary additions. Kick the can down the road. Police department was falling down. Kick the fire department down the road. Middle high school, it gets, the fire station gets kicked down the road again. We went through two chiefs. We're on our third chief by the time we get something going. Do nothing was never an option. It's just that when you deal with economic times, now I want to talk about tariffs. We had the same problem with steel when we built the high school. Chinese steel, Canadian steel, and imports, exports, and we had to deal with all that. And it wasn't always good news. But you never quit, and that's why I have so much respect for Jack as a former committee chair, and you as the chair, to provide that leadership, to constantly talk to the naysayers on your committee, and the naysayers in the public. And you just keep bearing down. You'll wear the lead out of the pencil. You'll win, and you're gonna win, you're gonna get a fire station. And then they're gonna say, "How did you do it?" Other towns are gonna come see you and say, "What did you do to do this?" It's an amazing feat when you do an infrastructure project as big as this one and long overdue. So as we look to the future, we're gonna keep moving forward. There's no reverse. We're gonna have to deal with the tariffs, we're gonna have to deal with the weather, we're gonna have to deal with whatever we find when we do it. We're strong enough, we're Southbridge, we can do it. Keep up the good work to the committee, fantastic job. Thank you for not quitting, and just keep knocking the tin. Because in Southbridge, we have solutions. We solve our problems. And thank you for that, and thank you for being the chair. If there's no further discussion, roll call vote.
Thank you. Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Shenyu?
Yes.
Counselor Montigny?
Yes.
Counselor Marketti?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Ortiz?
Yes.
And Counselor Lazo?
Yes. Motion passes. In unanimous. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Counselor Marketti?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Counselor Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I just want to say, I was in the fire station last weekend, and I noticed that there was a workbench in the back of the building that was installed by my grandfather probably 50 or 60 years ago. And I was told that it's probably gonna have to stay with the building because it's anchored so tightly, it's never gonna move. So I'm sorry to say that, you know, some of the Daniel heritage isn't gonna follow, but I'm pleased to have voted for it tonight and get a nice, brand-new, shiny building in place. I also want to say that the Veterans Council is looking for volunteers to put up flags over, just prior to the Memorial Day weekend. You can go on the social media and find out the contact information there to find out exactly who you need to contact and, and what days that they'll be putting the flags on the graves. It's a small gesture, but it's an important gesture, and I think it's something worth considering. So if you've got a couple of young children in your family, I think it's a great learning experience for them, please consider helping out the Veterans Council and getting those flags on our veterans' graves. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Counselor Shenyu?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Over the last few weeks, I have been asked about supporting some apartment complexes or new apartments in the town, and I was torn about how I would support it. Recently, where I live, Lebanon Hill Housing, the elderly, which are mostly on fixed incomes, have been notified of a $700 rent increase beginning, the beginning of June, all the way through the end of the year. I don't know what's gonna happen to these people that live on fixed incomes. I know a couple people now that are $1,200 Social Security, and they live on a couple hundred dollars a month. I know another lady that gets $800 a month. The type of housing that's being proposed, I feel, is not what is needed in this community. What is needed in this community is elderly and veteran housing. The elderly, I will support 100% some type of housing, but with the rent increases that are being seen by the elderly, we're gonna, or they are gonna be homeless elderly population out there, living in their cars. I've heard from people at Lebanon Hill Housing that are gonna have to move in with their children, that are going to move in with even strangers to be able to survive, and I don't know how they're gonna do it. I've been in contact with the governor's office, Senator Fatman's office, and state rep. They've all referred me to the Massachusetts Housing Authority, that, and they tell me the same, same answers. There's no help for them. There's no help to help the elderly out, but we find, it's, it's, the help that is offered is not what is needed. The elderly population in this community has served this town as taxpayers, and we can't help them. And we're gonna create a mess. We're gonna create a homelessness population amongst elderly. And this is something that I thought I would never, ever see in my time. And it's just something for this community, on the people that are proposing these projects that want to come to town, you should really consider the elderly population. They're not being considered, and we're gonna create a monster with not having them. So I, I just, I just can't support the other type of housing that is being proposed. It's an increase in our services, it's an increase in our water and sewer treatments, it's a burden that's gonna happen to our hospital and all other services that are offered. We're having people come from all over the state of Massachusetts to come here because of what we offer as a community in services. And it's getting to the point that we cannot afford this anymore, and we have to start worrying about the people that live here now, and especially the elderly population. So I ask all councilors to think of something like that. Call your state reps, call the governor's office, reinstitute rent controls in this community that was done away in the early 90s, and, and that would be a start. And just to think of your elderly population, you, you're gonna get there. I, I know what it's like, and I never thought I would be this way. But again, you're getting there, and you're gonna see the situation even maybe worse by the time you get there. So thank you very much.
Counselor Ortiz?
Nothing tonight.
Counselor Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Just wanted to point out that I believe last year, there was a charter review and a report provided to the council. Is that correct? I, I, yeah, and if that's the case, then this year, we need to do a bylaw review according to our charter. So I think that should be put on the agenda at some point in time to establish a bylaw review committee.
Consider it done.
Thank you.
Anything else, Counselor Kelly?
No, not tonight, thank you.
Counselor Montigny?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a great meeting here about the fire station. Looks like it'll be a good Christmas in 2026. We'll have to ask Esteban if he's got an update on the youth center and see how much that side of town is really going to flourish by then. I attended the Wellstorm fundraiser this weekend with most of the council. It was a very lovely time. And it was, it was just great. I also have to mention that the CPAC is going to be meeting on May 12th at 6:00 PM in the library, in the Mills Room in the library. But that was just a, a nice fundraiser and a good time to see everybody together, people from council and school committee. There's four weeks left for everybody to register to vote, to be able to vote in this town election. I know Gus Steves has invited the town council and school committee candidates to the debate, or what they call councilor's forum now, I guess, or candidates forum, Thursday, May 22nd, at 6:00 PM in the chambers. It'll be on channel 192, I'm sure. And other than that?
May 19th, Senior Center.
Oh, the May 19th, the Senior Center. Thank you, Counselor Shenyu. They are having coffee with the candidates, I believe. It's at 10:00 AM. It's a Monday morning, I believe. Yeah. And no, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Moving on to discussion, next meeting dates. Don Councilor, Counselor Montigny?
Monday, May 5th, 2025, at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers.
Agenda item 14, adjournment.
So moved.
Motion by Shenyu, executive by Ortiz. Hallows in favor? Opposed? unanimous vote, present, and adjourned.